I'm on the screen.
Okay. Kathy, are you on the screen or are you on your phone?
I'm here.
Yep, I see you.
I'm on the screen. Okay.
I'm just looking to see. You don't think, I don't think Crystal's connected yet. But everybody else has.
Okay. All right, and we have.
A quarry.
Five members here?
Yes. You do.
All right. All right, so I'll go through and start. Or did, was Ed kind enough to start?
No, we did not start.
Okay. All right. Um. All right, Mark, would you be kind enough to say the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. All right. All right, Joanne, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. This is Monday, September 21st, board meeting. Roll call, Douglas Beebe?
Doug Beebe is here.
Kathy Buckley?
Here.
Michael Hagedorn?
Here.
Ed Marin?
Here.
Christopher Michelle? I see him. I see him too. Christopher?
Chris, what do? On mute.
Crystal Palmer? Present. Nicole Poupore?
Here.
Mark San?
Here.
Pauline Stone?
Here.
All right. Um, we're gonna start the meeting off with miscellaneous. So, um, I believe Mr. Mannix will probably be introducing our opening of school CV tech.
Yes, so I thought it would be important to have, um, some conversation about how the first five days of school went, um, was thoroughly impressed with something that we normally do, then we can move on to CV tech, and then we can move on to what happened this weekend where we are now, and have some other conversations of, um, you know, just, um, information that just became available, and, and then maybe move to athletics as that's been an ongoing topic of conversation. How does that sound to you, Kathy and Ed?
I'm, I'm fine with that. Ed's nodding, so I think he says yes.
Okay, so why don't we just start? I think, uh, the administrative team is here. I see Darcy's, um, name, and I think Sarah's here, so we'll go Darcy, then Sarah, then, um, Principal Nelson, and then Principal Bazio. So, Principal Stoudinger, if you want to just talk about, you know, the opening of school and just, uh, how things went with your virtual kids and your in-person kids during the first, uh, five days, that'd be great.
Students were all very in-person. They followed our protocols. We had some difficulties with our three and four-year-olds keeping their masks on, but for the most part, teachers reported that the students really rose to the occasion and that they followed the health and the safety guidelines. So teachers really did a lot in-person to, um, really talk about hand washing and talk about this cleaning of the desks, how to clean your hands before you take your mask off, how to store your mask on your desk while you were, um, eating. So it was really spent building a lot of routine and ritual, and of course, they got into some content, but it was more like socialization, get to know you, and really focus on the safety protocols throughout the building. And our digital teachers, I was able to pop into some of their Google meets, and it was really adorable to see the kids and, um, they seemed happily engaged with their teachers, and one comment was that they moved, they were able to move along quickly in their curriculum. They didn't have to spend, obviously, a lot of time doing the cleaning and safety protocols. So like as far as the connectivity and the Chromebooks, we were able to get those out to students in a, in a pretty timely manner, and we didn't have a lot of, um, families left in need, so that was really great to see. So we were just starting to, you know, work out the kinks in our, our schedule and kind of get the kids into a flow for their virtual learning. Um, it was, it was off to a pretty good start, um, all around, and even today, I walked through the building at 9:30 a.m. and I saw students already on, teachers already on a Google meet, meeting with their kids because they already had their Chromebooks at home, and the teachers who, um, didn't have Chromebooks at home, everything was in the lobby by 8:45 so that, um, parents could come and pick up their materials. So I was really impressed at the quick turnaround time for today and just the overall, um, safety measures being, being, um, you know, taught to kids to start the school year. So people were upbeat, but yeah, at the same time, it's a lot and it's very stressful, so we're just working through it all together.
Thank you, Principal Stoudinger. Principal Paquette? Sarah, you might be on mute if you're talking.
Thank you. So I would reiterate much of what Principal Stoudinger, um, stated. Our first few days were certainly, um, getting ourselves in and acclimated. I will say that Monday's drop-off last week was a bit rough. We had over a hundred students being dropped off, and of course, parents wanting to be early than, rather than late, really caused quite the congestion. At one point, I know I looked and I was seeing cars down 22 and down Spelman Road, and it took us until 10 o'clock to get everyone out of buses and into the building. Um, so that was a little worrisome, but we regrouped and I really applaud the parents for their adjustment and following the plan. Tuesday was much better. I think we were all in by 9:30, and the rest of the week, it was by 9:20 as planned. So that certainly was nice to see the adjustments come together. The students were excellent. It's amazing to see how resilient they always are. We really didn't have all but one, um, you know, little mask hang up. Of course, we have the littles and we do have to do lots of reminders, but for the most part, they're really doing a great job with the mask-wearing and following all of our procedures. Much of the week was spent, um, making sure that the students were up to speed with the hand-washing requirements and practicing the six-feet-a-distance, um, making sure that masks were worn properly. The teachers have all been outstanding all last week and very upbeat and excited to have the students back. Virtual kiddos are off to a good start. We've been able to work with the tech department and work through some of just our little glitches with Chromebooks either not charging or, you know, being able to get on what they need to be on. We have made a smooth transition today. I was there by 7:15 and have several volunteers that were getting materials out onto tables for parents to come and pick up by 8:00 a.m., so that was great. Um, I'm not quite sure how much is left there still to pick up, but I know teachers were making a very concerted effort to connect with families today and make sure that everyone is up and ready to go with, with the virtual learning. So things have been off to a pretty good start.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, Principal Nelson?
Yeah, just to, um, reiterate what, uh, both, uh, Principal Stoudinger and Principal Paquette, um, have stated already. We were off to a really good start this year. Our first week, um, like any typical first week of the school year, is always focused on building relationships with our students and reviewing the routines and procedures, um, for the school year, and, and this year wasn't any different. We had a, uh, first-day presentation in which the teachers reviewed the safety protocols and procedures specific, excuse me, to this year, um, with an introduction of our dean of students, Dave Manning. Um, we were excited to welcome our students back to the building. The, uh, bus, the parent drop-off went really smooth. I've never seen the middle school loop, uh, go so smooth in the morning as it did this year. So that was a highlight of, of the morning, um, and we worked on, uh, the entry of the students. We worked together, I worked together with Matt Bazio, um, in order to make that go a little bit, uh, better on that end of the building, and, uh, we were, we had a great Friday entrance into the building as well. Um, I visited, uh, the pods, and you know, in the middle school, we have limited transitions, and the students are in pods for most of the day in the same classroom, and they, um, were, were positive when I asked them about it. They were just happy to be back in the building and, and see other, other students. And so it was a really positive atmosphere around, um, around the middle school. And we just kept reiterating the fact that, um, the hygiene, um, hand washing, um, every morning, we had a daily announcement about that procedure, the procedures about social distancing, and overall, the students did a fantastic job, um, following those procedures. Um, Chromebooks, um, have all been distributed. We haven't had many, um, tech issues. Our virtual teachers, uh, have made us aware of issues, and Ed Tech Department has been phenomenal in helping, um, our teachers overcome those challenges when they're faced with, with them. So overall, it was a positive, um, first week.
Thank you, and Principal Bazio?
Yes. Hey, good evening, everybody. Just, uh, wanna thank everybody also. Just wanna start by thanking all the principals, the admin team, uh, for all their hard work and collaboration as we worked through all these processes, um, all summer. Um, there's a lot of people that were, that put a lot of hard work into everything that we put together. Um, and you really, the opening of school was, you know, I thought was fantastic. Um, I was highly impressed with our students and teachers' ability, uh, to create a safe and high-quality educational experience. Students and teachers truly followed the safety measures that we put in place each and every day for that first week. Uh, students truly understood the importance of the safety guidelines. Uh, it was really cool to see them, you know, definitely high schoolers staying in the right of the hallway, keeping six feet of distance, following those safety protocols. Um, it was very orderly, and it was really cool to see our students really take that on and understand that importance of what the safety measures were, and they truly followed them. Uh, we didn't have to, you know, we reiterated in the hallways and told them, you know, keep your social distance, keep your mask on, uh, but the students really did that. They, they really were happy to be in school and they wanted to stay in school. Um, the first couple of days were extremely important to review those safety procedures. On the first day during first period, I had a Google meet with all the classes and went over those safety protocols, what they do when they enter the classroom, what they do, uh, when they have their assigned seat, what that looks like when they're sitting in their assigned seat, how they exit, um, and use that hand sanitizer as they exit the classroom, what it looked like in the hallways, uh, what, you know, what protocols were we gonna do for hand, hand hygiene and respiratory hygiene? And I went over all those expectations with our students, um, right off the bat, so they understood what that expectation was, and I can truly say that they rose to that expectation. Kids were awesome. You know, I can't, I can't say that enough. Our kids were awesome, and our teachers were even more awesome. They, they really followed those procedures, they reinforced them with our students. They were vocal with our students in the hallways and, and in their classrooms and reinforced those safety measures. Um, and I could not be prouder of a group than that group, uh, this past week. I truly, truly think that everybody worked extremely hard, and every safety measure that we put in our reopening plan was put in place on a daily basis. Uh, like Principal Nelson talked about, uh, we did, uh, adjust our dismissal procedure. Uh, we saw, just, we wanted to make sure that we cut down a little bit more density in the hallways at dismissal, so we opened up, uh, more exits for them to dismiss, uh, but it was orderly. Kids were staying socially distant, masks on, um, and it really was awesome to see. Uh, today was a great, you know, a great first day moving to remote instruction. Uh, I think our teachers really did a wonderful job making that adjustment. Uh, the cool thing is that they were already ready for this. You know, they had their Google classroom set up, they've been doing Google meets, they've been interacting with our students with the technology. Uh, so it really was a smoother transition because they had these elements in place every single day for the last five days with their students. Um, as Principal Nelson talked about, we did have our Chromebooks out. That was one of the big things we worked on today to make sure every student, uh, had their Chromebook. If it was with Ed Tech, uh, we got it out to them, um, and once again, I can't thank Ed Tech enough for the hard work and dedication they're putting in every single day. Uh, without them, this would not be possible, and I really can't thank them enough. Um, so once again, our teachers did an outstanding job, our kids did an outstanding job, um, and we're gonna continue to provide those high-quality educational experiences for our students through remote learning, um, and our teachers, I know, are up for the challenge, and I know our admin team is too. So thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Matt. Um, yeah, for me, uh, a quick rundown here. Day one is always one of my favorite days, probably my favorite day of the year when everybody comes back and when we start hopping again. This year, it was a different, uh, feeling for day one because you don't get to see the smile, as many smiling faces, and, um, the return was a lot different, but I was so excited to see our processes work and to finish day one knowing that, wow, this has a really good chance of working. And then another day that's never been that great for me was day five, knowing that we had a whole weekend and that things just got better and better and, and better, and there were no problems on day one, but just things were really settling in. And that was my goal all along, is to have people find their stride, and if we can find our stride and keep kids safe and, you know, hopefully remain immune in the North Country to COVID, uh, we had a really, we have a good chance, um, and we'll see. So on days, uh, one, two, and three, I think I played hall monitor over in the high school and in the middle school, keeping kids that are right, keeping them spaced out, stay in school, follow the rules. Uh, I had spent some time in the parking lot as a parking lot attendant, was in some classrooms. I really liked some of the classrooms at BES. They converted the gym, they converted the new cafeteria. Actually, I was thinking about taking over the new cafeteria as my office. Mrs. Bassett did such a phenomenal job. But we use, you know, we're using different spaces now because the density is more safe when you use larger spaces. So gyms, libraries, auditorium, bigger rooms, like a music room. If a music room is bigger, the principals are like, we're gonna use this for our kid. Why? Because it's safe. Um, is it perfect? And I keep telling everybody, there's nothing perfect or great about, um, school during the pandemic. Even the auditoriums being used and the LGI. So, uh, all along, our worry was, and it was at the beginning of the year, we were very open about this with the board, is we really kind of thought we were hanging on by a thread from a staffing standpoint. We had every staff, uh, member being used, and they were here, and they were, they were really, really showcasing their skills. I can't tell you how, how proud I am, and I won't, I won't go back into that like the, like the principals did. They were, they're spot-on on that. Quick little story here. Well, um, first day, Matt had a, uh, had everybody ready to go, and they did a nice job exiting people off the buses, but all the buses were here, and I thought actually that there's, uh, their transition into the building at the high school, middle school level needed to slow down a little bit and needed to maybe use a little few more doors, and we talked about that and worked that out. And then, um, counter to that, I was down at BES, and I really watched, uh, the methodical way in which Principal Paquette was transitioning her kids in very, very slowly. They weren't grouping up at all, and, um, the only thing I said to her was, over time, you could probably pick that pace up a little bit once you got that down, but I really liked, uh, what I saw. Same thing over at Kalamun Head, uh, on opening day. They just, um, they took their time, they had that same issue with all the parents wanting to take pictures and enjoy that first day, and they went around the corner, and I'm sure everybody was worried, but, um, as subsequent days came, they, they hit their stride. So terrific job by all. Um, just so everybody knows, I did invite the Department of Health to, they have a board meeting right now, but one of their, uh, ranking officials will join us at 7:00 to help us understand, um, what's happened since Friday. So moving to that right now, if, if anybody, well, why don't I just stop for a second and see if any board members have questions for, um, the principals?
Now, the only thing is, any chance we can get up? Um, the other admin, um, Gary, since he's been such a big part of this whole startup, if you want to do a quick, any, anything that we anticipate, um, you know, it sounds like, it sounds like, uh, the administrators are pretty happy with the response, even with tight stuff.
Gary, you got it, Gary?
Sure. Um, yeah, I'm, I, I wanna thank, um, Rick and Jeremy and RJ, um, Barkum, our student, uh, intern. Uh, obviously, I can't do this by myself, um, and I think the district was, was wise to have the foresight to provision devices for the pre-K 3, pre-K 4, uh, K 1 and 2, um, because we did that in the event that we had to have a closure, and that is exactly what happened. Um, and we didn't skip a beat because those devices were already in the classrooms and already ready to be handed out. And I want to thank the, the building principals for organizing, um, in their respective buildings, the handout of those devices, and the volunteers who helped make that happen. Um, we, we spent the whole week fielding tech support calls from parents and students and staff. So, you know, many hands make light work, so we appreciate them getting involved. Um, but I want to go back to just one other thing that, uh, I had given the board a taste of the last board meeting that I think has been a, a really, um, successful move for the district, and that was the transition to Parent Square. Um, uh, a couple of you, um, I think, uh, Kathy and Pauline are the only two sitting board members that are not current parents of students, uh, enrolled in the district, and I wanted to let you know that as of, um, this morning, I added both of you in manually as Parent Square, um, recipients. So you will start receiving those same notifications that everyone else does, but in just, I just took a look before the board meeting started, and, um, if you carve it up between the four, or among the four buildings and the district-wide postings, in one week, um, counting administrators, district, and teachers, there have been 311 posts, um, you know, teacher to, to, to parent, uh, district to parents, um, parents back to, to, um, to us. So that line of communication has been, um, very important, especially as Mr. Mannix was, was trying to communicate out to the community such important information and making sure that people are being reached where they can be reached, um, and know that you, you know, I think at this point, there are, there are 12 families in the district that have bad contact info out of the more than 2,100, uh, students enrolled, and we have, we know who they are, and we've been sharing that information with the building principal so that they can work to correct that. We never had that before. So especially in this time, I think that's, that's phenomenal to have as a resource. So anyway, those are, those are my two things. Um, you know, we're working as fast as we can to support people. We put out information as quickly as we can to make things better for them, um, and we'll continue doing as much as we can.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any other questions from the board?
Nope, I just wanted to let Gary know that I already downloaded the app. I'm all set for Parent Square.
It's a great, great tool. Thank you, Gary.
Right, and actually, I was really impressed with it.
Yes. Okay, so, so on, uh, yesterday, uh, right around lunchtime, uh, I received a phone call. I wasn't, I, it didn't pick up, my phone didn't ring, has that problem sometimes. And, um, the health, it was from the health department. The health department immediately contacted, uh, Assistant Superintendent Taverni, who then immediately reached out to me, um, and I did see, like, two or three minutes later, I saw my phone had, um, had a few calls, called, um, Polly back, uh, called the Department of Health, and we had a confirmed case of COVID and another assumed case of COVID. I'm gonna be very careful because there's some details that, uh, we can't divulge, um, because everybody deserves their, their privacy for health issues. So knowing what I knew about the situation, I knew that this would probably wouldn't be isolated to just this particular one student and maybe another student. So, and I think, um, in my conversations with Polly, then immediately we reached out to Sarah Paquette. I messaged her every way to Sunday. She thought that her building was on fire, I think. And then, um, we messaged other administrators as well, talked about the situation, reached out to the teachers, obviously had to download a lot of contact information to the Department of Health because they wanted to engage in contact tracing right away, which was really, you know, super important because you want to start people quarantining immediately. And, um, you know, we had a, we had a, uh, consensus on the situation and, and what we should do, and my recommendation was to place a hold on in-person learning. Um, I definitely, sorry, I missed one other step. I definitely opened up the plan, looked at the plan, and the plan was written, you know, back in, um, early, late June, early July, with the help of a lot of people, um, probably thinking that we would be able to know if, uh, this plan would work, if there was a positive case, not really giving any assumption that we would be the first case in the area. So because we are the first, we don't have any data, we don't really know whether eating in-person in school is, uh, is really effective. We don't know, we, we don't know whether wearing a mask, we'll talk a lot about masks in a few minutes because we've learned that there, those rules changed, um, two or three times for us today. Um, so we didn't know whether the masks, you know, we're told it would work, but we don't know whether the masks and the social distancing and the mask breaks, whether those work or not, and we didn't want to just keep going to school and expand the footprint of this virus. Uh, what we thought was very important was to, um, do the contact tracing, see how far spread or how tightly, um, the, uh, web of COVID is on this, uh, in our school, and then evaluate, uh, what we want to do next. So we're doing that with the Department of Health. Um, let me just see, let me just see if there's anything else for the Department of Health. So... We also were concerned that, um, with the staff members being quarantined, would we have enough staff to open school? One thing I definitely didn't want to do was have kids come into school tomorrow or today and turn around and send them home. I wanted to give parents enough notice. Um, but as the day unfolded and as the night unfolded, it was on the phone till late at night and back on early in the morning, it became evident that, um, this is, um, there's a concern out there that this isn't a single event, um, a single person in the district. We're hoping that it is just a single person in the district that has this, or maybe one plus the assumed, but it's looking like there's a, there's, um, there's concern. I think I, we just put out on Parent Square that right now, us about 24 hours in, a little bit more than that, we have 50 people quarantined for 14 days, which is kind of dramatic within our district. People from other districts are getting quarantined because of the community, potential community spread. Nine people have been sent for testing. A number of other, uh, staff members are out for testing and feeling sick. Um, and we have had some conversation with the Department of Health that there were some cases of maybe people that were, um, potentially sick. This is just early or early in the game. I'm just sharing with you what I know right now, um, but potentially people that might have been sick, um, prior to the start of school. So there's a lot, a lot of concerns going on here that, um, made us hit the pause button. And we also, you know, know that, um, it takes 14 days, up to 14 days, excuse me, for the virus to accumulate enough so that you become, um, you become a positive test. It's, I think everybody knows that you're really more contagious two days before you really show symptoms. So symptoms start showing up two to 14 days after you've, uh, acquired the virus. So that's where the 14 days came from, is let's make sure that this is, uh, either a low-level issue in which we can celebrate the, all the things we just talked about with the opening of school, or is this a pretty severe issue and maybe some of the things that we were told would work, um, don't particularly work. Um, interestingly enough, speaking of things that work and don't work, and I do want to invite the admin team to jump in as they were part of a lot of conversations and have strong feelings on this. But the, um, I think it was late last night, the CDC put out a memo, um, changing the stance on the masks and saying... changing the stance on the masks and saying that essentially that the, that the six-foot distancing, sorry, they didn't change the stance on the masks, they changed the stance on the six-foot distancing and that that may not be the gold standard anymore. And then in true COVID fashion, that change from last night was then changed today. Another thing that was changed today, it changed back to, nope, six-foot distancing works. So that gives us cause for concern, let's just say. Why was it changed? Is it collection? Is it political? Is it science? We don't know, but we are concerned. The other change today, which caused the mask quarantining, is that, I hope I said the mask quarantining, not the mask quarantining, but the idea that if you had a mask on and you were around a COVID patient and you were six feet away, you were protected. But that's not the case anymore. Even if you were wearing an N95 mask and around this particular student, and an N95 mask are the masks that healthcare providers use, you need to be quarantined for 14 days. So to expand on that, and this is really important. If you have a shield on and a mask on, so the only way you want, you would avoid quarantining for 14 days is you need a shield on, a N95 mask on, a suit on, looks an awful lot like a hazmat suit or like a doctor's suit, and gloves on. So if every teacher had that and they came in contact with a student that had COVID, they wouldn't need to quarantine for 14 days. But now, if you don't have all of those, if the nurse doesn't have those, or the teacher doesn't have those, we're being told that you, and this is all new today. This isn't something we knew yesterday or Friday or during the reopening plan. This is startling news to us, but now you you need to quarantine. So we took all the standards, we met or exceeded all the standards, and we're still told that we need to quarantine. A couple soccer teams have quarantined, the refs of those teams have quarantined, the coaches of those teams, because they played each other, are quarantined. So it's hitting other school districts as well. Clinton County Health Department has been fantastic partners to work with. We, they've been getting some bad information and then we we work it out because they're not in the school business and we're not in the health business. So it's been wonderful going down this road together. And I'm sure there's a lot, a lot of questions. I don't know if anybody from the admin team wants to jump in or if we want to take some questions from from the Board of Education.
Does anyone from the Board of Education have any questions at this time?
I do, Doug Beebe. So these 50 people that we now have quarantined, is this a direct result of the tracing? And if it is, I would be curious to to see, are we tracking the results of this tracing?
So Doug, that's a good question. It is a direct result of the tracing. And I'm not sure what you mean by the track, like, so how many of the people that are quarantined end up positive? Is that what you're getting at?
Sure, definitely. I mean, if you quarantine 50 people and you can narrow it down to three people that actually contacted and then actually trace that down from those 50 people to that, to those three people to see, you know, we just, you just went through that we had a whole bunch of different standards now that we need a mask and gloves and an N95. So now if we can determine that, okay, we went from 50 people that have a general contact to these these people to the three people that actually did get the disease from them? Don't, I would assume that would be pretty valuable information. We'd be able to draw some conclusions from that. I mean, just not, just not in this school, but I mean, just in general, that would.
Yeah, so that's one of the things I thank you. That's a really good point. And that's one of the reasons why we're we're going to remote is let's see what happens here. We would have loved to have that information from two or three or four other schools and know, okay, this is kind of what happens when it hits a school. We're first. Hey, Beatment Town, we're, you know, we're first here. But that, I got to caution everybody, that's 50 quarantine, not not saying you've got to go test. It's quarantine. If you get symptoms, then you may go test. But we're not, in my opinion, we're not even halfway done the contact tracing. There's, they haven't started with the middle school yet. And I mean, they haven't started with the middle school yet because the test isn't back, the presumed positive isn't back yet. The other point here is this rule change isn't, in my opinion, the Clinton County Health Department making this change. They're getting this from the state level. They're, they're, they're constantly surprised at the changes as well as all of us. But Doug, absolutely. We're going to take a look at these numbers. We, that's the purpose is let's find out how effective were we? How, what's the impact when it does come in your building? All the, all the issues that that come up with this are, they're numerous, but we've got to be measured and and careful in our analysis.
Yeah, and I'm not laying that on Deepment Town faculty by any means. That's a CDC issue as far as I'm concerned that they should be the people that are analyzing what and how and how close and how much contact it takes to get this disease. I mean, I just was just throwing that out there that, I mean, anyway.
No, thanks.
I definitely think it's a, it's not a Beatment Town faculty or administration issue. It's a CDC issue.
Oh, well, just out of making sure that, you know, we take care of ourselves here, we are going to track that and and mark down because sometimes things get lost in these governmental systems or these political systems. So we're going to track it and we're going to know our data, like always, right? What other questions do we have from the board?
Dan, following Doug's thread there. So how many actual confirmed test cases do we have right now?
There's one confirmed test case. There's one that we were told to presume that teacher is positive.
Right. And how long has testing results been taken to get back?
So testing results, that's a good question. So I heard today one person was four, four or five days to get back, which is actually kind of fast. Polly, were you going to join in on that?
Yeah, I, it's been anywhere, depending on where they go, from two days to to four days, it seems people are being told.
Right. I agree with that medically. I think based on the acuity of the symptoms, that depends on the result. But yeah, I would say two to four days is average at this point for a PCR result.
Okay, thanks.
What other questions do we have out there?
It was, it was stated on the on the newscast that there was a second grader and a middle school teacher. That's been on on television, on the, on the newscast.
That is correct.
Yep.
Second grader in the, in the middle schooler related, why do we think that the teacher is is a candidate for COVID?
We think that because the Department of Health has told us that, and there's other reasons why we think that. But I don't, the more we start talking about the specifics, the easier it is, we start talking to sex relations, where people live, what they do, it becomes, their, their privacy is ruined. So I want to avoid that. That's something we could probably talk about in an executive session.
Okay.
It's a good question because I just have to be careful about everybody's right to privacy.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments, really. This is Mike Agador. The 50 different people that are being quarantined for 14 days. They could be tested and get an answer in two, four days, and then they don't have to quarantine for four days. Is that up to them and their medical provider? But I guess that's the probably the Department of Health saying that they need to at least quarantine for 14 days, right? Correct? Is that the way you understand it?
Yeah, I think you're right, Mike. I think they probably could get tested, but it doesn't. So wait a second, we did go through that question with them and it was, you can't just go get tested because it takes up to 14 days for the virus to work where you would become positive for a test. So if you're in that room with that student on Friday, or that student maybe received it from another student in the in the room, right? If you're in that room with that, with those students on Friday, you might not show, you might not test positive until 14. If we tested everybody right now, you'd get certain data, but other people might, the virus, you guys know the way the virus works, is working in the medical field, Crystal and yourself. They might be negative now, but the virus would then build up and then be positive later.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's what we call false negatives. So, you know, you're exposed, but still incubating or whatever, you get a negative, but then two days later, you're positive. So. Okay, so that's one of my questions. Another one was, how did this expand into Cumberland Head? Or maybe is that getting too personal again or too?
No, I don't think it's too personal. There, we do share staff. And there are, this expanded into other school districts. There's students I know in Shaysie right now that are quarantined. You know, you've been to those town soccer games. I think your wife coaches. So, so those expands that way. But Cumberland Head, I don't know, but I think there's one student on the soccer team. And I think there's one teacher who works in both buildings, who who needs to quarantine.
Actually, I've got a quick question. Just so everyone understands and community understands. Is it appropriate or legal for us as the district to to go remote learning in one elementary building, but not in another?
Legally, you, yes, there's no issue this year with deciding to go remote in one building and not in another.
Okay.
I have one more question. And a comment. When, from a medical perspective, yes, two to four days. When, when we book surgery in my office, we get a two-day test. But I think that's special circumstances. But most tests, people are getting tests. Yeah, they're told two to four days, just so everybody knows. But there is a rapid test that the ER uses and they get that answer back in an hour. And there's a test that's a two-day test. And then there's the typical test that's usually about four days or less. But my other question was about the N95 mask. Now, in our hospital, we only use the N95 masks for people who are having like surgery and the OR, they're using them, or other people who have known exposure. So examples for like on the floors, they wear a certain kind of mask that's not an N95 for every patient. But if the patient has known COVID, then they use the N95. So I was just trying to clarify what you were saying, like, we don't expect all our teachers when we come back to be wearing an N95. There's no known, right?
So can I have Sarah Pauquette join in on this part with me because she was on the call when this was revealed to us? And, yeah, this isn't a Beatment Town wish or a Beatment Town matter. Is Sarah still here?
Yeah.
Thanks, Sarah. Do you want to give your perspective on that and tell on any gaps?
Sure. So we actually, as administrators, were asked to identify who we may need to call upon in the building to escort possible symptomatic students. And of course, the symptoms for COVID are inclusive of just about every symptom for every other illness that you could have. So we have a protocol in place where a student says, for example, I have a stomach ache. We have them stand outside the classroom on a particular sticker and the teacher calls down and asks for an escort. And then that way, we ensure that someone comes with their fitted N95 mask to bring them to the isolation room. And the reason for that is that we want to keep our nurses' office clean and clear of any symptomatic students. So that way, our diabetics in the building are able to have free access to the nurse's office whenever they need to, as well as our students that are on meds. So we had the understanding that when we were fitted with the N95 masks, if we go and pick up a student with symptoms, who's showing symptoms of illness, that wearing the N95 mask and bringing them to the isolation room would be sufficient and we would not be, you know, at risk for needing to quarantine or needing anything further. And as Mr. Manix said, when we were on the phone today, we were told that if we did not have not only an N95, but gloves and a suit and a shield, then we would still have to be quarantined because we would be considered having been exposed to the virus. So this was certainly new information today to us that we had not had prior.
And it's not like it was written. I want to be clear on this. We've left no stone unturned. This was not written down anywhere. We have been through every document written. We are on this. That's, that's a game changer, right? Mike, that doesn't, you work in the hospital, right, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, that threshold, we have a more higher threshold at at BES now than you have at the hospitals. Is that the way you look at it?
No, it provides some clarification. Like I said, if you have somebody with symptoms, it does make sense to need, you know, the whole thing. And that's what they do in the ER, for example. If someone comes in with a broken finger, they don't do all that. But if someone comes in with cold symptoms or nausea vomiting, you know, especially when it was in March, April and May, they were wearing these masks that had, and suits that had filtration systems with them. It was crazy. It looked like an astronaut suit. And, and I don't know if they're still doing that. I haven't been updated, but I imagine they still are with with people with symptoms. But anyway. So if you're dealing with a kid who has symptoms and is going to the nurse's office, if you don't have all that stuff, which we won't have, then whoever walks that kid down and the nurse, I can see as potentially being exposed and need quarantine until you get an answer.
And the teacher, right? Because he's in a room with a teacher or other teachers, all the other people that he was with down there. So you're right. And I thank you for for that clarity. But it's a game changer because, you know, if you're, let's say you come into school and you have this particular teacher and then you go to your speech teacher and you're still using all the precautions, right? And then you hit gym class and then you're not feeling well and you walk down to the, to the you're, you're now talking four or five staff members.
Yeah. It snowballs very rapidly, yeah.
I don't want to dwell on it, but it's, it's pretty serious. One of the pieces of conversation we had is everybody, and I certainly receive emails from both sides, everybody, and we've talked about this at the board meeting, has a belief, and I call it on the spectrum. Right? We don't have a national understanding of this where like everybody's bought into this is where we are. Some people think one end of the spectrum is, it's this is us all overblown. It's not even real. And the other end of the spectrum is, spectrum is this thing is going to just be devastating. I get accused of not understanding each side because I really kind of feel I'm pretty close to the center on this issue, knowing that my job is to keep everybody safe and hopefully educate the kids along the way. So that's been, that's been kind of problematic most recently. But we, our staff is on that spectrum. Every member of our staff is on that spectrum somewhere. So one of the engagements I had with all members of the administrative team is knowing that we're hanging by a thread, knowing that every teacher has assigned students and if they, I put out a letter at the beginning of school, like if bus drivers don't show up, we're in trouble, right? We're maxed out on buses. If cafeteria people don't show up, we can't feed kids. That's an issue. If teachers or aides don't show up, and we were short like six aides at one point, you know, we begin to have a problem. Certainly, if teachers don't show up, we can't, like in other days, you could, okay, all kids go to the auditorium or to the cafeteria and you have a makeshift study hall. That's not an option anymore. People don't show up, it becomes unsafe to have kids and you got to look at sending kids home. So we engaged with the, with the admin team and maybe they can weigh in right now on what they thought, knowing the cases with the positives and knowing some of the other situations that we got that we can't necessarily talk about right now. So Polly, why don't you start?
Yeah, so yesterday when we were speaking, and this was, of course, before we even knew the extent of the quarantining and what would happen today. But just looking at our plan and it fairly quickly realized that it's
fairly quickly realized that it's really difficult to follow that plan when you realize the extent of the contact tracing that needs to be done. Even with just the one student and one presumed person, the one presumed person, until we have a test result, nothing moves forward. So how do you bring people back within twenty-four or seventy-two hours when you don't have all those answers? But also knowing that a lot of those staff, as Mr. Manix mentioned, they want to feel safe and they aren't necessarily going to be comfortable coming back into a building when um, we are still, have so many unknowns about the contact tracing and, and what's happening in the building. And it really, it does make it difficult. And then finding out the more information today from the health department on the extent of how many people will be quarantined, um, staffing wise becomes very difficult to run school. And I know that's hard because people are understandably concerned about closing school and going to remote learning. Um, and questioning, you know, if it's only one person positive, but it, it, there really is such a ripple effect and so it affects so many things.
Any other principles?
I'd like to add, oh, go ahead, Darcene.
So, um, people had brought up, how come Cumberland Head is closing when it's, the cases are at the main building? But the students are so intertwined um, outside of school. I think it would have been risky to open. And then I think about the comfort level of my staff. Um, I'm glad that we closed the whole entire district rather than me coming to work at, you know, eight o'clock in the morning and finding that I didn't have a full house and I would have to give parents last minute notice that we had to cancel school because we didn't have enough staff on hand. So I think it was smart to just cancel the entire district, even though there wasn't directly related to Cumberland Head as of yet. I think it was, it was, it was inconvenience to, to parents, but it was more convenient than canceling at eight fifteen in the morning. So that was just my take on it.
And I'd like to add, you know, I've said it a lot to the teachers so far is that this summer we spent um, an extreme amount of time putting in um, theoretical type situations. And we built a lot of plans based on theory and now everything is really coming out to play in practice. And I think until you've experienced and tried to work with the health department on contact tracing, you don't realize just how quickly this web just doubles and triples in size um, from one phone call with the health department to the next phone call. And I think we uh made our plans based on the information we had at the time. And now those plans seem to be, um, and the information seemed to be changing the more that we talk with the health department. And I think for myself, in the last twenty-nine hours or so, I've realized just how enormous this quickly becomes when you have just that one um, positive situation. So I think, you know, it's very eye opening when you're finally in the storm instead of looking at the storm and trying to make a plan.
And again, this hasn't even hit the middle school presumed positive yet. If that case does become positive, all of those students that that teacher teaches, and that teacher's not a remote teacher, I probably shouldn't have said that, probably just narrowed down the field a little bit more. But that um, teacher, uh, all those students will probably, will need to be quarantined as I understand it right now. And any other, like any other teachers that's, that the um, person eats lunch with or might walk with or other things that they may do, they will all need to be quarantined as well. If the principal had a meeting with this particular teacher, that principal will need to be quarantined. Um, so those are all very, very real uh issues. And I can tell you that as of five o'clock, I was on, today I was on the phone giving the health department five more names of kids that are in uh, healthcare and are in with another suspected case. So it's, it's that web is, is, is big. Um, I don't think it is, I don't think for a second that this initiated in Beatman Town. It's impossible to think that. But I think um, it's in our community as we said. Um, and kids weren't getting tested before because when I followed up today with the particular um, individuals, um, everybody's feeling relatively okay, right? It's a, they, they generally feel like they have a little bit of a cold. It's when it hits somebody who's has a compromise, compromised immune system. Um, and we have some of those that are getting tested because they are not feeling well. Right now, that's when the real, real danger comes in, whether that's a kid or a, a staff member, custodian, bus driver, whatever. So, go ahead.
So, I mean, clearly listening to all administrators and Polly, everyone, you guys have really been good about following procedure, hallway, the way kids and staff are handling it. Um, certainly good awareness and safety and protocol. I think uh, maybe we could talk a little bit about um, their, the difficulty or the, some people having trouble with the interpretation of the plan that everyone was a part of putting together. I think, I think there's some confusion and, and in, and in, and in looking at the current response that, that was taken, it sounds like we are in category, uh, criteria three based on that particular chart. Um, and, and maybe what would help, I think, quell some of the confusion in the community going forward is that um, the initial uh conversation about the one positive and uh, the student and teacher, for some people it didn't interpret them as a category three. So going forward, we may want to clarify, we are in category X and this is why we're going to do this particular safety protocol. Um, I don't know if anybody else has comments as to, you know, that might help improve our communication, our process.
Um, I, I, this is Crystal. I have a, a comment on that, Ed. But first I just wanted to ask a question about our, so sorry, I'm going to come back to it, Ed. But are students who are attending CB Tech? Um, I'm, I'm, just want to clarify, they are still in person? Or are they virtual as well?
Thank you. That's on the agenda. Um, I did bypass that. Appreciate it. So we took a lot of heat um, by carving out CB Tech students. It's a huge investment. And that plus their, the way they structured their time at CB Tech, it was virtually impossible to have them go in person to both buildings. Cause you can't miss two days of school here. We talked about this at the board level. But so they are remote, except for they go to in-person two days to CB Tech. So there's no, they haven't been exposed to anything here on campus. And there isn't any, there hasn't been any communication from the health department that there's a nexus to CB Tech. So those kids will keep going to CB Tech and not, not miss a beat. They're going to continue learning remotely like they've been here and continue going to CB Tech like they've been doing all along. So that's actually really good that we had that in place and people may be seeing the method to our madness.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And yeah, just to, to follow up on Ed's point. I mean, certainly as I'm looking at the reopening plan, you know, I, I would say right now at this moment, we're in criteria two. Um, are we going to move to criteria three soon? Yes, likely. Um, you know, again, it's certainly frustrating to all the community members, the educators, administrators, that this policy that we all worked so hard on uh, um, over the summer was perhaps inadequate. Um, but just also at the same time remembering as of right now, we still have very low community spread. Um, and you know, the next four days or so, we will have um, more data to assess what's going on with the Speakman Town cluster.
Right. We have low community spread and be interesting if we tested more, right? Especially the, this particular population. One of the deficiencies that people have mentioned is how are we going to, I think even our governor has mentioned many times about testing kids is really important as part of understanding how effective you're going to be, just like the colleges, but the colleges test, right? And then they know, oh, we have seven hundred cases. This is serious. So I'm hoping that um, right now we've been, it's, we had two, two tests. Well, now there's three tests administered. Other people have gone and had tests. And there's nine other that the, that the Department of Health said that they would test. I keep looking at my phone because I know the Department of Health. So they can join us right now if you guys would like that. That was a.
No, I was just going to say there's been a wide community spread testing still. Yes, not locally in our school, but it's, you know, again, it's not like we're not, people are not being tested in the community. I think there's sixteen hundred tests in the last, I don't know, I'd have to look at the data, but it's posted, right?
One of, it is. One of the things I hear is that a lot of the people that are tested or repeat tests, like if you work at the nursing home, you're tested quite frequently. If you're, if you're a doctor, you're tested quite frequently. So they have a certain batch of those tests of the same population. So it's not, it's not always a random uh, display of, of what's happening in our community. It's a very, it's sometimes it's, um, we are also getting a lot of pushback from doctors about sending kids who have a fever um, in for testing and um, you know, hopefully we come over that hurdle and realize that it is important that when kids are exhibiting symptoms, they do, they are tested. When everybody, you were talking, did you want me to call Nicole and invite her in or did you want to say with a couple more questions?
Just to, just to go with a clarification, Crystal, I, I, I said criteria three because the announcement was to close for fourteen days and that's what criteria three has. And, and if we were in criteria two, we'd be only seven to hours. So I'm, I'm under the assumption that, actually under criteria three, Dan?
And what did you say? You got, were you under the assumption that we're in criteria three?
Yeah, because if we're closing for fourteen days, which was the announcement, then we're under criteria three. I'm just trying to be clear with our, our process that, that we're trying to follow. Uh, so.
Okay. So the process, our response, thank you. Our response was um, pretty well laid out in the uh, parent square message. But it was to allow us, so that, so in nor, in other times, if we know, we see how this goes and we know we have confidence in our safety measures, uh, we could probably easily pinpoint where we are. But because I had no confidence, uh, no information to, I shouldn't say no confidence, tremendous confidence on how we followed everything, but not knowing, um, how effective our measures were, I wanted to take a pause and see if these public health measures that some people say work great, some people say are overstated, some people say there's not enough, see if they work to keep our kids um, safe. So I did look at where we were in the grid, but I didn't, I said in the messaging that we've exceeded where we would be in, in that particular grid. Now, that grid doesn't take into account whether, if we were in a grid, the grid is where we are for cases. It doesn't take into account where we are for staff. Right? And where, it doesn't take into account quarantining. It just takes into account the number of confirmed cases. And I also took into account what I know that you guys don't know right now, which I can share with you later. And how I'm concerned and how I was immediately concerned when I heard um, the news and, and, and who was in, uh, who, who had tested and who was the assumed, um, how this could be impactful. And I didn't want to expand that impact onto our community. Cause it isn't a school event. It's a community event. It's not, it's not, you know, the elementary school and Cumberland Head will be fine. This is, I worry about all of our members in our community. If we had, if we kept going, I would be really worried that this would be a massive event. It still has a chance to be a massive event, but that's what I was worried about. So I wasn't worried about placing it in the quadrant. I was worried about being overly cautious right now while we evaluate whether these unknown safety measures actually work. I hope that answers your question. We also took into account that it takes fourteen days for this virus to essentially incubate within somebody. And that's an important measure here. That's an important part here. If we just tested everybody right now, we could get a number and be like, oh, it's five confirmed cases or two or one or whatever it is. But we also don't know what's happening to day ten, eleven and twelve, and could be right back where you started from. So that's where I came from in all this. I didn't, I didn't, um, I didn't avoid putting down what quadrant we're in because they didn't have us in a quadrant. I had us exceeding the quadrant. I hope that answers you. I hope you, you can give me feedback whether I should do that again or not. Obviously, this event will give us information as to, um, you know, the effectiveness of our plan and everybody's plans.
Can I ask a question? Sarah, is there any way I can just kind of add to that for a moment?
Yeah, after, we're going to have Christopher has a question, Sarah.
Okay. I just wanted to add, you know, I think what, when Mr. Manix and I were on the phone today with Nicole from the Department of Health, she made a really good point to us in that she said, you don't get a second chance to be overly cautious. And I think, you know, as an administrator of a school, um, I went into the education field. I didn't go into the medical field. So these last four to six months have certainly felt very foreign and uncomfortable. And I know that the community has entrusted their children with me and I have, you know, eighty-seven staff members that I love dearly and that I feel like I am responsible for their day-to-day, you know, wellbeing as well. So I think that erring on the side of caution with this first experience was an important one to do so that we can make sure that we're doing right by our Beakman Town community.
Christopher, you got a question?
Thanks. Um, I'm just looking at the, the updates from the Department of Health just today. I think just four hours ago, they, they were saying online that the six foot fifteen minute rule for quarantine um, still applied. Uh, I didn't see anything about, you know, the N ninety-five mask, the face shield, the, the hazmat suit, the gloves. Um, were, were all of these staff members who've been in quarantine within six feet of the student for more than fifteen minutes? Cause that's, that's what we're seeing. And if, and if that's inaccurate as a guideline that came out just four hours ago, are, are we going to see an update to that? Talking about the, the full hazmat suit and the, as a, as something that would prevent a quarantine if it was in the same room, it, what's the, where is, where are we getting the difference between these guidelines?
So we were startled as well. Sarah was on that call with me. I don't think Polly was. And I think they were saying, um, and we can get the Department of Health on the, on the phone. I think they were saying they were getting that. I think they were getting that from New York State. Sarah, is that, do you recall that?
Yes. And she, um, like you said, you can get her on the phone, but she did say how they are coming across, you know, school plans and not really liking the disconnect that's happening between some of the agencies and the school plans. Um, but I mean, you know, I can speak to myself and my quarantining situation and I was very surprised because I was not, did not qualify under what we had originally thought would, you know, equate to a quarantine situation. So um, it was surprising some of the information that came across today.
Sarah, can you share a little bit of the impact of that quarantine on, just on you as a, you just shared that. I wasn't going to share that you were quarantined, but you just shared that. Can you share? Some of the, I don't mean to put you in a, in an emotional spot, but um, you know, it was really tough to hear that, but go ahead.
Yeah. So, you know.
You want me to say it for you, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay. So Sarah, um, Sarah's daughter um, spends time with her and spends times with um, her um, former spouse. And Sarah's daughter will now spend the next two weeks totally away from Sarah and not, um, not with Sarah, with her spouse. So she's going to go um, two weeks without seeing, you know, her loved one. And that's um, a difficult spot uh, for her to be in her, and I just bring that up because um, Sarah's not, it's not unique. It's, it's a something we have to, in our decision-making process, we have to be aware that, and I know we are aware, I know you're aware. Um, that um, the impact of our decisions on the, the lives of the, the kids and the lives of um, the adults. So um, sorry, Sarah, and I know we were both, when I first heard it, I didn't, I was obtuse to it and I feel like a heel. But um, Sarah shared that with me and it was uh, painful. So are there other questions that the, the board has on the decision-making process, other recommendations? I would like to have faith. Well, it doesn't even matter really. I would like to have faith in our reopening plan. But if the state department changes the rules. But if the State Department changes the rules, um, I don't, we don't control that, or the CDC changes the rules, or whomever, we can update our plan, then we can look at that as rules change. Uh but it was a really good plan, I thought, at the time, and I liked the grid. I think everybody else has adopted that grid. And I'd like to think that, you know, that we're gonna be at one or two cases and that in the future, we're gonna just know, hey, our safety measures work awesome and, you know, this is where we go when this happens. And will be, our experience will be very informative to other school districts. I'm confident of that. But, you know, let's take a look and see um just how effective everything is.
Dan, I, I just wanna be clear, does the, the fifteen minute six foot rule no longer apply? And it.
Maybe we should bring in Nicole from the Health Department and.
Sorry, Kathy.
Um, uh, we have someone that's been kind of um available to us from the Health Department. So maybe we invite her into our discussion.
Yeah, she can, and actually she can answer that because we were, you know, that was the standard that applied to me before when I had a conversation with somebody outside the building who had COVID. So does it still apply? It doesn't seem like it's applying, but maybe it does in certain circumstances. Let me see if Nicole's available, okay?
Okay.
Good, thanks.
Can I just make a comment while um Dan is making this phone call? It's Crystal. Um, I guess I have concerns of, of, obviously, our reopening plan is going to need to change based on whatever these protocols are. Um, you know, certainly concerned that there isn't confidence in this reopening plan from our community members as well. Um, and then just again, the trickle down effect on the surrounding community, you know, Beakman Town District shutting down for two weeks with the first case. I think it's, that's a precedent. I, I will say that I think Mr. Manix has always been a, ahead of the curve with this COVID outbreak. And of course, I hope, as everyone is mentioning, that this early pause is, is the right thing to do going forward. But, but again, I think it, it just has this huge trickle down effect on the surrounding community. And we're gonna need to work to, to get the best, best protocol in place and um try to follow it in this giant social experiment that we're in.
Yes, it is a giant social experiment. I thank you for that. And I do think that, you know, in any experiment, as long as we're, have, you know, the safety procedures s- spot on, we can move forward. Um, I have Nicole on the line. Nicole, I have a Google, we have a Google Meet, Board Meeting going on right now. We have a nine member board um who uh are asking questions, good questions, great questions. And we have community members um listening in and just talking about um just some of the experience that, you know, we've had over the last, I don't know if it's been eighteen hours, something like that. So I think, and I, I've sung your praises. You've been, you and your staff has been, have been great working with us and figuring all this out. So kudos to you. One of the big questions is the, and I don't know if it was a surprise to you, it was a surprise to, to us, like Sarah, walking down, um moving the student, having the N ninety five fitted mask on that we thought was standard operating gold, gold standard procedure. And, and now that's not enough. Um, she would have had to have the, the she, I think my understanding is the shield, the gown, I want to call it, the gloves and the N ninety five on to avoid um being quarantined. Is, do we have that right? That's, we had that conversation earlier today.
So um there isn't any guidance for us to offer a school system with regard to the most appropriate PPE to wear? So what we did with the school nurses is follow the healthcare provider guidance, which is that um when a healthcare provider goes to somebody with COVID and they're only wearing an N ninety five, it's not enough to, to accommodate um for them to not be under quarantine or watched for those fourteen days.
And so under that standard, and I appreciate that and it's understandable, we have a, we have a two uh members in the medical field and they, they understood that and that was helpful for me. Um, under that standard, are we right to assume in future situations where if a student walks in and um is developing the symptoms ten minutes after being in school, this happens, you know, to kids all the time. They get sick in school. Uh, um, and they, they are with that particular teacher, they maybe go to another room, and then they maybe go to gym class and then they just had enough, they're being worn down, they verbalize it, they go to the nurse's office and the nurse isn't wearing that. Will all those people experience that, that quarantine?
So it will depend on a, a factor of things, distance from that person, the kind of symptoms that that person has, um, how long they were exposed to that person. So we're talking, you know, what, what's happened in this particular situation is we have a group of students in a classroom for the entire day, taking mass breaks within that room. We don't have clear guidance that says one hour, over one hour, less than one hour, all of those things um that we desperately would want for the school system, but we just don't have.
So Nicole, that doesn't exist right now for us to put that in our plan? Is that what you're saying? All right, so that we, no matter what, like we didn't miss something, that just isn't there. So does this situation give us time to evaluate the effectiveness of that particular method of giving mass breaks, wearing masks, keeping six feet apart, that kind of stuff?
Right, so I think we're, you know, the state has been promising us some, some much clearer school guidance documents that have been held up in the governor's office for a while. So I would encourage you to talk to your elected officials to try to get that um pressure back into that, into that political space. Um, we have pushed it through our control room, which is our key to the governor's office here at the Health Department. Um, so we are really struggling. Our, our county's health officials group that works with the, the State Health Department, putting pressure on them have not been successful either. So we're really struggling with, with how to help you guys to make this the safest place um without having this sort of world turned upside down. Because I understand that this probably is pretty stressful for you all.
You guys, you have Nicole here from the Department of Health.
Um, I do have a question for you, Nicole.
This is President.
My name is Kathy Buckley, and it was brought up in our discussion that um the possibility of um being put in quarantine, but then getting tested. So um they're saying on average, a test comes back two to four days. If you had a negative result, could you come out of quarantine?
No.
Okay.
If, if you've been identified as somebody that's a contact of a positive case, you would be moved into quarantine and doesn't matter through that entire episode of fourteen days. If you test negative, it makes no difference because the, the time that the virus takes to replicate and be effectively um swabbed out of your nose um takes up to fourteen days. So in day seven, if you don't have enough viral load to, to come out on that swab, that you could still develop it in the next seven. So we are not encouraging anybody that's been um a contact to get tested unless they become sick.
Okay. Um, the second question that I have is, um, it sounds like, um, there's been a significant number of people that have, have um come in contact with uh our positive case and our presumed positive case. What would you guess as an estimated amount of time it would take to do all the contact tracing involved in that?
So um we started contact tracing yesterday around eleven AM and we finished just the one case today at four. We haven't actually done um too much with our presumptive positive um due to the fact that Mr. Manix did close the school. Had we, had that not happened, we probably would have tried to rush through getting at least the school contacts out of the school um before we finish that. Even though she's a presumptive, um we'll certainly get going on that now, but um we won't be as stringent and as timely as we do on a positive case because if she comes back as a negative at this moment, she'll just remain under quarantine.
Okay.
And um, do we think, I, this, I don't know how you're gonna answer this, but there's, there's um some concern that there may be um, you know, that this particular student, second grade student, did not, you know, he didn't bring it from, you know, Florida or someplace. He may have acquired it um from somebody else here in the, in the, in the town. And it, so are you thinking that there may be other um cases that are either attached to this or outside of this?
So that's always a possibility. We have community spread. Um, so it's not been real thick and heavy. Um, but now that we're open um more and including schools, that we are definitely um have community spread here. It's certainly possible that an asymptomatic person could have come in contact with him that we just don't know was positive. It could be a number of different things. So there isn't really any pushing for, for where this person got the infection.
All right, so as of right now, we don't necessarily have an origin or a, a starting point.
Do you, did you want to answer that, Nicole? Did you hear that?
I didn't understand that.
Uh, we don't necessarily have an origin of patient zero right now, if we call it that.
Correct, correct. We don't necessarily do that in COVID. Um, we just go back to forty eight hours prior to the symptom onset.
Kristoff had a good question as we were calling you. Did you wanna, you know, ask that again? It had to do with the proximity. We kind of touched on it, but.
Yeah, the, you're, you're defining, the people who are in quarantine right now are people who were in the same room as this uh student. Um, not necessi, and were not wearing N ninety five masks, face shields, gloves, um, the, the body covering. Um, up until, I, I think the general public thinks that contact is defined as within six feet for more than fifteen minutes. But now we're hearing that contact is defined by same room without a hazmat suit for any amount of time. Um, which, which is it and how, how soon or is everyone gonna be on the same page on what the definition of contact is?
So again, that, now that we don't have the guidance from the school system, we speak to our state representatives and talk through that and they're the ones that advise us that it wasn't just any students immediately around him because we just don't have the information um due to the virus, uh not, us not understanding how the virus actually transmits or works. So at this moment in a school system, um, when we decide that this student has been in this classroom at this moment, um because they have mass breaks, because they are doing things together as a group, including eating lunch, that there's the potential that they could, you know, get COVID from that student. So i- it's, it is a, a difficult thing to, to kind of grasp because even in the community setting, we talk about how long were you with those people? And if this were six months ago or three months ago, we may have having a different conversation, but because the state has not given us the proper guidance and the guidance that they're giving us right now via um verbal communication is that entire classroom gets quarantined because we just don't have the right um tools to gauge that. And those tools being environmental controls, those non pharmaceutical interventions, all of those things. How do they play in to protecting our children? Um, so there's kind of where we're, we're sitting in this strange place. It's, I'm hoping that we'll have better guidance to be able to do this better in the future, but.
So, thank you. This was shocking to myself and to all other superintendents and there's some stress on the fact that we have these approved reopening plans, and I'm not second guessing the decision, but we have approved reopening plans. There's no way we could have put that into a reopening plan again because we didn't know that until today. And it wasn't like we missed it. It's not written down anywhere. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's not written down anywhere. So had we known that, we would have, our grid would look a lot different because if we have one case, we've got to assume we're gonna have probably twenty two to twenty eight cases. Because you're gonna have, well, eighteen to whatever it is in the classroom, right?
Well, let, let, let's hope not because those interventions are in place. So all of this, I think somebody said this when I got on this social experiment. I think all of these things are leading the state DOH um to make decisions based on things that are happening across that.
Yeah, sorry, I totally misspoke there. I didn't mean to say cases. I meant to say in quarantine, sorry. But that was.
Quarantine is just a protective measure.
Right, okay. What other questions does the board have for Nicole?
So it sounds like, it sounds like basically we're in a situation where if anybody tests positive at any point, the school shuts down for two weeks.
I don't know, is that for Nicole, Ed?
Yes.
Nicole.
Um, that wasn't my recommendation. That was um the school's decision. So we're gonna support whatever the school decides to do in those situations. So um, because we can't, we don't have the right to open or close a school. So we would just support whatever decision that is and.
Could you, could you qualify the, the, the guidance, where the guidance you mentioned came from?
I think he's talking to Nicole. He wanted to know where the guidance that you mentioned came from. I think she said, go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, so the New York State Department of Health is who we report to and that's who oversees um all of these COVID actions. But the DOH has not given the proper um or the updated guidance to the schools um for us to, in writing, for us to actually physically see and read and work on plans together with the schools.
Right, I, I understood you mentioned this. So, so what guy, so what, where, where, what guidance are you following and from where? If you don't have something from the state.
It, there is guidance from the state, but it's, it's very, um, there's some very particular comments in it. It's in the New York Forward website under K through twelve schools, the interim guidance from August. Um, you're welcome to pull it up and read it. It just is very specific that students that are sick have to go home and they can't return. And then our normal contact tracing process, but there's not a whole lot in there that changes it from a community to a school. Um, but then when we talk to the partners at the state, they give us verbal guidance that these are the kids you have to quarantine or the students or the faculty or whoever we talk through that process with.
So that's an important piece that will be frustrating to um parents and it is frustrating now. And we'll have to change our guidance and that is that if you have a, and it, it differs, the New York State Education Department and the Department of Health are at loggerheads on this. And right, they're, they're not agreeing on this. So, so the Department of Health rules and that is anybody who has a symptom, a headache, any one of these symptoms, headache, uh fever, coughs, runny nose, any of those, you need to have a COVID test. We know COVID tests can be free. We know a COVID test can cost a lot of money depending on your situation. Can't come back to school until you have a COVID test. Is that correct?
That's what the guidance says, yeah.
That's, that's what the governing body says. So we're gonna have.
The DOH credit.
Like I have, my throat is raspy. I don't know if it's just because of the stress or mask or not getting enough sleep. But if I have a sore throat, I need to get a test and I can't come back until I have a test. Sounds like, right. So, and Ed, you asked if you had one, if you had one positive test, would the school close? Purpose of this, the purpose of this, I think Crystal said, social experiment right now, this um snapshot of this is what is this one, what is this one test going to reveal? And that's why we're doing this because we don't want to be like, oh, it's just one case and be oblivious to all the other variables that are unknown. If we're taking, thank, Nicole said she agreed. If we take a look at these variables and say, hey, these all work, these variables that we weren't positive about, they really seem to work. Next time we have one case, um as administrators, we can say, you know, we don't know how the staff, well, they would feel, but, or, or the community, but we, we'd say this is what, you know, we're gonna do and we, we can go back to the board and say that, look at this, have one case and I presume positive, we only ended up with two cases. You know, we would have been seventy two hours closed. We can do that moving forward. Could be a lot worse. It could be that simple. Do you guys agree?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, for the student that went, the, the one that tested positive. Now, are the parents gonna have to, you know, the parents gonna have to quarantine? And then contact tracing for everybody the parents have a contact with? I mean, is it out, that far reaching out?
No, so, so the positive person, all of their contacts are under quarantine, but anybody that the quarantined people have had contact with. But anybody that the quarantined people have had contact with are can are too far removed from the case. So we don't quarantine, create contacts of contact with contact.
Okay.
The case and the immediate contact of that person. So when you're under quarantine, that means that you don't go anywhere. But if you're deemed essential or work for an essential business, you may work if your business determines you as an essential employee. You can work, you must wear a mask, you must monitor your symptoms and check your temp every twelve hours. So there's a caveat to some of that. So you may see some parents or community members that are under quarantine working. Uh, but again, that's so that we have people to to enter our workforce and continue to provide the services that we need here. Does that make sense?
Yes, Nicole, thank you.
Nicole, I have one more question for you. And this is just my own personal curiosity. If um a family is under quarantine, what type of monitoring do they receive um other than the um essential worker that may have to go out in the community and check their temperature every twelve hours?
Okay, um so when someone is under quarantine, we call them first on that first day of quarantine and do an interview. We talk to them about their job, what they do, where they've been, that kind of thing. And then every single day, if they're agreeable, we either call them. Well, if they're agreeable, they get a text. They always get some sort of contact from the health department. Um, but for the most part, people are on a text system. So they just have a text comes into their cell phone and it says, do you have symptoms of COVID today? And it gives you a little website to link. And you say yes or no. I think it's one for yes, two for no. And then you just continue to do that for the fourteen days. And if you click yes, it comes into us here at the health department and we call that person and see what's going on with them.
So there would be no way of knowing, this is how it's awful, but you know, curiosity killed the cat. Um, there would be no way of knowing if someone was in the grocery store and texting back, no, I have no symptoms when they're supposed to be quarantined.
Correct. However, there is a legal order that is issued to that those people um by the sheriff's department. And the sheriff's department does random drive by um checks on people under quarantine and isolation. And if they're not home, they call us and say, does this person work? And is it this is a time that he could, he or she could be at work? Um, and if they're not there and we can confirm that they were at work, um they they may go to their work to make sure that they're there. So there is some checks and balances in place. And if we have reason to believe um that they're not following that, we do that you have some legal um ramifications. We've had a couple of people cited for not following their quarantine.
Okay. All right. Well, I hope everyone follows the awful quarantine.
Me too.
You know, it's incredibly difficult on children and their families. But it seems like the only way that we'll ever um be rid of this. So um, does anyone else have any questions concerning um the health department?
So we had, so we had, um, you said you had just the positive, right? And that yielded fifty quarantine and then nine tests. So this picture becomes a little bit more clear within four days based on those nine tests, whatever comes back. And if something does come back, as Mr. Manix said, we don't think it originated in our building. Then you would do potential contact tracing on one of those nine, if in fact it is positive. Would that be fair?
Yes, if any of those become positive, we would contact trace them as well.
And of the nine, they're outside our building too. I know this individual played on sports teams and had coaches and in other contexts. So of the nine, they're outside our building, right?
Oh, it's it isn't it nine staff members? Is that nine staff member or excuse me? Nine people within our school community that you referred to testing?
So nine people of contact of this case were referred for testing.
Okay.
I don't think all nine of them are in your school. I think eight, seven or eight of them are in your school.
So seven or eight in our school and maybe two someplace else.
Definitely, there's definitely one that is not. I can't remember. There's two of them.
Mark, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I forget the, I think you said it, you didn't think it originated in our building. So having one outside the building could be the positive or where we look to. But if it is in our building, then we have we have.
Yeah, I mean, and we knew, we knew, thanks, Mark. We knew going into this that any case that um shows up at Beaveman Town and causes some uh distress on our system like we're seeing, um, people are gonna be like, oh, they got it at the school. Oh, Beaveman Town's got a case. It was that way before. But the first case wasn't a Beaveman Town case. The person went to New York City. It wasn't like we have the virus crawling around our building, right? Um, our building was clean coming in. Um, the most likely, these are cases that are I mean, I I think it's beyond most likely. I think it's self evident that these are cases elsewhere and kids are walking in or adult is walking in with a case that they acquired someplace else. They just happen to be either employed by us or went to school here. And then the real, you know, the real issue, God bless those people that might have the 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 case is, is there spread within our building? That's what we have to control, right? That's 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 the point here. That's why we're shutting down. Is if we can't control in our building, you know, when we're eating food, we we eat more food in our building than New York City serves in their restaurants, right, indoors? They serve no.
I didn't think the decision was the right one. I I I just think that in four days, we're gonna know a lot more than we know right now. You know, because of the the time it takes to do the test.
Four. Yeah, I I think when you watch the, when you watch the Elizabeth Town um situation unfold, how long, that must have taken at least like ten days to unfold, would you say, Nicole? Was it the town? Were you too too busy working?
That's a a whole other ballgame of um, I I don't know a lot of details about that, but it happened um pretty fast spread. So it definitely had some vectors within their their nursing home facility. I'm not, I don't, you know, I don't think it was on a surface. I think that somebody was like in the building, um, but.
But but it took, was it just four days or does it take, does it take longer to have it all kind of shake out?
So they're still getting cases.
They're still getting, they're still getting cases.
Yeah.
Because if you think about the incubation period being a fourteen day incubation period, um, nobody, it it's not like they all got, they were not all exposed on the same day. So just like our students in our building and our faculty, I'm sure not everyone was exposed at the same moment. So um saying in four four days, we will have more information, but we will still be getting more information through the next two weeks.
Also, one thing I I omitted, well, let me ask, are there any more questions for Nicole? Nicole, I am sure we'll be talking, if not again later tonight, a few times tomorrow. So again, you've been a wonderful partner for us, helping us understand this, put things into perspective. Um, and if we can help you, you know, when you guys run into something that's confusing, we'll help you as well. So talk to you soon.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Hey, thanks for joining us. Really appreciate it. Thank you. One other piece of the response that uh we did later after the um parent square went out was we knew that the bu- building was disinfected on Friday afterwards. And we actually called Nicole and she said it was twenty four hours are good. But we actually sent people back in on Sunday night, mobilized a group and went in and disinfected and will continue to disinfect even if nobody's in there. So I just want people to know that it wasn't, we 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 expanded our our reach in the, you know, tried to do more. I'd be interested in hearing the conversation between the board. Because we, you know, I do work for the board and and we'll make sure that we follow the board's wishes on um this particular situation. And um what you would like to see um moving forward or what would you like to see immediately done?
Um, I can comment on that. This is Chris. Well, I I think Beaveman Town and Superintendent Mannix, you know, we we are place a priority on following the process and again, working so hard on this protocol. And yes, recommend recognizing that this is, this is novel ground. We haven't been here before. But really, to the to best of our ability, reacting from a fact based approach and not a fear based approach going forward, uh you know, again, we're learning more. I think it's just going to instill confidence of our parents and our students. Um, and and again, recognizing we we don't have the all the information, it makes decisions hard. And again, Superintendent Mannix, I know this has been, I can only imagine all all the decisions you've had to make in the last forty eight hours. Um, but but again, um transparency for the community. Because it's definitely disheartening that families read this plan, thought they had an understanding of what would happen. Were consulting the plan when they heard, oh, you know, it's at the Beaveman Town School. Okay, I'm gonna be good for Cumberland Head and then you know, again, I understand why those decisions were made, but I think we need to make sure that our our school district um is is aware of whatever the end. There's probably not gonna be an end result. Sorry, I shouldn't say that. It's gonna change next week and it'll change next month and but keeping everybody in the loop with of those decisions.
Thank you. Any other board discussion on this?
Um, yeah, actually. Um, what, other than um the quarantines and stuff like that, has there been any other impact on um faculty and staff? Like how has this um changed anything?
Yeah, so I I think I can answer that, but I would I would probably be doing a disservice to to that. I would hope um some of the administrators can join in, I think they're still on and share with us what you think the impact has been to the community uh and and staff.
I can say that I think that um staff I've spoken to have been thankful that we did respond the way we did and that school is closed and have a chance to respond. I think it's been very stressful for them and the few staff that have I've spoken to that are not feeling well and are have been going to get tested, it's very, very stressful for them knowing that um we do have a positive case because of course you're thinking, you know, you're not feeling well in worst case scenario. So it has been very stressful on on the staff I've spoken to.
I would um second that, um since the presumed case is in my building, that there are staff who are uh very stressed out um and and worried and that they are taking, if they do have a sniffle or a cough, taking it very seriously. Um, and and seeking out healthcare and and even getting tested. I have about um three to four uh staff members in my building who are getting tested, who were tested either today or getting tested tomorrow. Um, but the in the information I get from the community, from the parents, is that um we're they're thankful that we are protecting um our students and they um agree with um going to remote for two weeks.
Yeah, I can piggyback. Uh, this is uh, this is Matt. Um, I can piggyback to what, you know, Polly said and Duffy said. Yeah, I think the teachers definitely um were, you know, on board for what the decision was made. Um, they're making a big adjustment today too, you know, they're 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 trying to get the remote instruction going for those for those students to make sure that we're keeping that high quality instruction. Uh, so I know they've been busy doing that. So I know and I commend our teachers for how hard they're working uh to get that instruction going for our students um on a quick turnaround. Uh, but I think that, you know, like like Duffy said and Polly said, I think that definitely a little apprehension. Uh, but I think they know that we're making the right decisions. We're we're communicating with the Department of Health. Uh, I think they understand that that's what we're gonna do to make sure that we are thorough in this investigation and make sure everybody's safe. Um, and I think they have definitely confidence in us that that's gonna happen. Um, but at the same time, yeah, I think that some of them are definitely a little apprehensive and it's and it's it's granted. You know, and we're just gonna work together. We're gonna keep building confidence like Crystal said. You know, I think we we continue to, you know, look through the process, work through it as as a as a community and and a group and stay together. Um, I think that's an important aspect too, is everybody staying together as a group. Uh, you know, our teachers, our community, our admin, it's it's highly important. I think that we're strong enough to be able to do that. It's just kinda, you know, going through this process the next four days, you know, it's gonna be, you know, it's been a rough, you know, twenty four hours. I can guarantee you that. It's not been a fun twenty four hours and, you know, but one thing that happened is we come together. You know, Beaveman Town, everybody's coming together and they're figuring out a plan and we will, we'll get through it. You know, we'll get through it together and, you know, that's 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 the Beaveman Town way and we will get through there. But um it'll be, it's gonna be tough. There's nothing, nothing easy about it. But uh, you know, I wouldn't wanna be in any other place and with any other people. And, you know, I thank all everybody that's been part of this process because it's it's one of the hardest things we've ever had to do. Um, but it's, we're gonna get through it.
I know for, this is Sarah, for Beaveman Town Elementary, they're certainly rattled. Um, we had a Google Meet this afternoon where I shared with them that I would be um working from home. I know as an administrator, um having to go into quarantine, I'm certainly thankful that my staff are going to be working remotely. Um, I I don't even know how I would have tackled trying to be, you know, at home and overseeing the building. Um, so I know that they're rattled. I know that there are quite a few circumstances where their own biological children have had contact through athletic teams. So there's a lot of um, you know, staff members who have biological children who have been put into quarantine. So um they're going to be able to teach remotely and take care of their biological children um while taking care of the students of the district. Um, but it's certainly been a trying um thirty hours that we've been through. And, you know, they have certainly banded together, but I do know it's a very stressful and rattled staff right now.
Polly or um Darcy, did you wanna add anything?
I think that all the other administrators uh said it very well. I don't think that my staff feels any different, so I don't have anything more to add. But I feel like as though people think, okay, they're at Cumberland Head, there's nothing to worry about. But I will say we had a dad come to the building today to pick up a Chromebook and he was waiting for a phone call from the Department of Health because he knew his child had contact um with the positive case. So like um Mark said, we'll know a lot more in the next four days and things will unfold. So we'll just kind of be on high alert and follow our plans and stick together and and do the best we can to keep maintaining our health and keep making sure our students are receiving their education remotely.
Thank you. Any other question, this issue, any other comments from the board, anything for us to reflect on?
I have nothing yet this time. It looks like no one else has any questions.
All right. So then the other topic on here, we talked about CV, um, yes, we talked about this, but obviously this um dramatic situation that's unfolding moment by moment. And the last thing on the agenda, I believe, is athletics. And we had talked, I think, on Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday, I'm losing track of time um about a um waiting period. We had a lot of information from schools. Uh, Mark, you put in an email on Saturday that uh that information has changed. I guess that's just the COVID world we live in. So yeah, it was it was shocking to see the change. Um, but I shouldn't say that. It was, it was surprising to see uh some of the changes. Um, I do still um want everybody to know that uh there's some thought out there that um there's fear mongering or something going on on behalf of me or the um others about loss of funding or COVID or whatever it is. Um, things change. Uh, we, my numbers were spot on in my um um announcement to this, to you and to the in gen parliament verified those numbers at the board table. Um, something has changed. So um shortly after our meeting, I think it was Tuesday, um NICE filed the lawsuit. Um, and Governor Cuomo said, you filed your lawsuit, we will not, um, we will not, sorry, I'm trying to get my camera on. We will not take away your aid for September. That's that's what's been said. So it doesn't say about anything about giving back the aid that's he's already took. So back when they said, and he's been saying all along, if there's no federal stimulus, and we've talked about it every board meeting, for transparency purposes, not for, not for scaring purposes. for transparency purposes, not for, not for scaring purposes. Every board meeting we talked about Cuomo says he's gonna take away twenty percent of our funding. And what did he start doing? Taking away twenty percent of our funding. That's what he did. That's not what we thought he'd do. That's what he did. And to date, we have no assurances that just for the one month of school, he's taken away four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. So a half a million dollars already out of our coffers with no word on whether we will receive that. Now, if we do receive it, we'll let you know, hey, good news, he gave back the money that, that they've taken. Now, they're not gonna take away money in September. Um, it should be noted that that's one of our lowest aid payments and just the way the aid payments work. And they did say oddly enough that they'll revisit this in November, which would be right after the elections. So, um, that's gonna be an interesting time, but I want everybody to know that without a doubt, we have lost three point one million dollars in ELT funding, which has had a really positive impact on our school over the years. We have lost over two point seven million dollars. And then unplanned is the half a million dollars of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one twenty-eight fifty-five is out right now with no promise of coming back. So that's, um, that's important to know. As we talk about where we were and now where we are. So it is different. Before, if he does take away twenty percent for the whole year, it's three point eight million dollars. So now I wanted everybody to know the numbers, so they're not, we're not sitting there at the end of the year going, why are we, you know, you never told us, why are we, you know, maybe broke? As far as sports, I think we put out, uh, we had a pretty good discussion about seeing if we can reopen schools safely, seeing if playing without masks was the right decision. And we've had a lot, a lot of talks, so back open to the board for more communication on athletics. I think Greg Myers is still here? If we have questions for him as well. Yes, he's still here, he's on the list. So I know I haven't stopped. I know people have, maybe they're, I don't know if their feelings have changed over or did the case keep the pause in, in effect? What does the board feel about uh, athletics?
Keep the pause in effect.
That sounded like Doug.
No, I think that was Kristoff, I'm not sure.
Oh, was it?
Christopher, yeah. I, I think the pause is something that I'm more than comfortable with.
Yeah, just, this is Crystal. Yeah, just speaking again, one of my earlier comments, again, uh, Mr. Mannix, I think you, you have been ahead of the curve with this. Um, I'm, I'm sure for the athletes, it was disheartening to hear about the pause, but again, thinking about student safety as, as a priori, priority, right? We still have very low cases in our community. Again, let's see what happens with this, calling it cluster at Beakman Town. But to introduce students to inner scholastic sports right now, I, I, I agree, I do second the pause for sports to continue.
I also feel that there, there should be a pause for the sports with everything going on now. It's not the time to bring athletics into, into the mix.
This is Mike Agadorin. But what we haven't addressed is the coaching decisions. And I was wondering regardless, if we don't even have fall sports, which may be a possibility, isn't it reasonable to at least name coaches so they can plan and talk to their, if the varsity coach knows who the JV coach is gonna be and he has input on the modified coach, you know, at least so they can start planning for the future? You know, that'd be my question, I guess.
Yeah, so, um, I think there's an interview, either, either there was an interview today or it's tomorrow. We don't have any, uh, there's very few competing courses, uh, or courses, sorry, competing team, teams with more than one applicant for the position. There's very, very few. And without, with volleyball being out of the picture, uh, volleyball is one of those. They have a couple of people who have signed up to be the coach. Will be able to do that. And Mike, I could make an interim appointment pending board approval once the interviews are conducted, which I think are happening today, tomorrow.
Now, if we hire coaches, are we going to be paying them from when we hire them? Or do they, do we pay them when they, when they coach?
Thank you, Pauline, because that's one of the reasons why you go on hold a little bit with some of these things, because the expectation always is, well, you've appointed me and I had a meeting here and I did this or that and, um, what are we, you know, what's the compensation? And, and I, I worry about getting everybody excited about sports if in fact we end up in a, in a different situation. I want, I want everybody to know too, that the whole time I was working on sports, uh, having a lot of conversations and it was, it was painful because we needed to keep the focus where it was, but nonetheless, it's still a job that needs to be done. There was a lot of talk about extramurals with, with, um, local schools. There's a lot of talk about just playing within Clinton County. Um, there's a lot of talk about how we can have sports if, like Crystal said, we remain low and, um, and we feel confident that, you know, the safeguards of public health is all, is all still working and, and going well. So we were working on it and we, um, we have assurances through, um, Matt Wallentuck at the New York, at, at Section Seven, that, uh, any schedule that they could, they could accommodate any particular schedule if it's a go. Um, I was actually hoping that we could practice earlier because I was watching the five days. I'm like, this is really, really good. I was really, really excited about what I saw. And then of course, the, you know, where we are now and, and watching what's unfolding is, um, cause for concern, not cause for anything more than concern and observation. Um, but if, if we're lucky and, and it's, it's small and the tests come back negative and this is like a flu or just a bad cold going through a lot of people, um, we can look at starting practices and then jumping into games really, really quickly. If it's not, then you know, we, we'll leave that up to you guys or safety. I don't know, does that sound fair to everybody? Or should we, should we be moving, continue moving to appoint coaches and look to start practices or be ready to start practices?
I, I appreciate your responding to my note, Dan. I think a lot has changed since Saturday when I wrote it, obviously. Um, I was just seeing other schools having special meetings and, and making decisions. I know our next board meeting is until the thirteenth and you had said a pause till October fifth and that's like the week after, so timing with the meeting was just an extra week. So if we could have made that decision on October fifth with a special meeting, that would have been ideal. Um, granted, a lot of things need to happen in our, in a positive manner in the next four days for us to stay on course, obviously. The coaches, I, be, be ready for October fifth, I think, would, would be good. Um, so they can hit the ground running, get, like Mike said, talk to their, their team, get acclimated. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
I, I agree. And I think in these unusual times, I think we could talk to, you know, the potential coaches or when you're making an offer that, you know, as far as compensation's concerned, they have to understand and I'm sure they, they need to understand that they wouldn't be compensated until they can start practicing, whenever that is, if it's October fifth. And it's October fifth, but it doesn't look like very good for that. So if they can be, you know, at least informed and start communicating with their co-coaches and their assistant coaches and their, you know, varsity down through modified, you know, I think that would alleviate a lot of, uh, stress and, and for players to know who, who are they gonna play under? You know, I've heard that from other parents as well. And they just feel like they're locked into no man's land until at least they know who their coach is. So, yeah, I would appreciate, you know, I think it would be good to, to have your interviews and, and, and offer spots with the understanding that they're not receiving compensation until we can start practices or play. Um, and I think that's reasonable and I think that's a good thing to do. And, and so can I assume that, you know, if there's a position with only one applicant that, that they'll be informed once we have conducted the interviews for the positions that have more than one? Would that, would that be a reasonable, like, you know, you're gonna let everybody know, once the one, the positions that are still up for grabs are determined, then you can let everybody know.
So the way I look at it is I went, I'll be one of the deciding factors when there's more than one candidate. Um, Greg, if you're on, can you unmute and jump in? Because I don't know what kind of communication you've had with people where there's, like, some, some places, some of the spots are unfilled still. Um, it is very hard to find staff, um, to, that wants to work in this environment right now. And there are some that just have one. I don't know what you've done with the ones that have just one, uh, appointment. Greg, you there? There you are.
Yes, I'm here. Um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we conducted interviews for, uh, one of the positions that had multiple, uh, candidates today. Uh, waiting till tomorrow to have a conversation with you, Mr. Mannix. Um, one thing that we do need to keep in mind that the board policy on hiring of coaches is you need to know who your varsity coaches are because they are involved with who is going to be, they're on the committee to appoint the JVs and the modifies. So if we're not sure who the varsity coach is going to be, uh, we need a little bit of time to be able to figure those things out and I'm confident we can do that. One of the things I do hesitate, and I've told Mr. Mannix before, that gives me a little bit of pause is we have to make sure those people are certified. And some of those, uh, issues are CPR and AED, which we have Mr. Manny who helps us with that certification, but there's some guidelines that we have to follow to get that certification done. So, um, now, you no longer can do a in-person class with more than four people or whatever. Um, so there's, there's some, so I don't, I don't want to wait until the day we gotta start practice to say, hey, we're gonna appoint these people coaches. I haven't done anything with informing people that they're, uh, that they're gonna be the varsity coach. I have told them that I don't anticipate any problems with people coming back that, uh, are the only applicant and had positive evaluations. So I don't know if there's any other questions.
Sounds like we'll talk tomorrow, appoint, um, we'll look at, um, that. I'll, I'll meet with one or, or two of the applicants and we'll settle that situation. And then we'll look at preparing everybody to start. But when I say everybody, we're really only, right now, Section Seven is only gonna offer a limited schedule of sports. So one thing I was working on was could we do golf? Could we do tennis? Could we do bowling, um, all quickly and, and, and in an extramural way to give, uh, this window of opportunity? And I was looking at, at it like that, Crystal, like a very low, um, low rate and maybe it is still a low rate. Um, in the counties, that's a window of opportunity. If you're not gonna let them play now, then it's really hard to think we're gonna play later. You know, but not everybody wanted to do that. They, they're, they're, they're moving towards just soccer and just soccer and cross country. Is that correct, Greg?
Uh, swim is still on the table, but we don't have, um, and, uh, a, uh, and actually gymnastics is still on the table. I haven't seen a proposal yet. Obviously, we have a facility issue with gymnastics. So those are the only four that are still on the table for section.
So just, I don't want to get anybody's help up. We don't, we have more than a facility issue because our gyms are used. And we have a facility issue. There's a transportation issue there. So there's, there's there's a lot to gymnastics that I would have a hard time with. It also indoors and, and other, other issues. And there's three teams and they're, uh, our team is a combined team with kids from another school. So that's a real significant challenge, um, for, for me. Does everybody feel? I mean, I heard Polly, or sorry, Pauline, and two other, two other board members, Kathy mentioned that they were in favor of the pause. Is there, is there maybe it was Mark too, I'm not sure. Is there any other information for me to consider?
The only thing that I, the other, you know, is, is the, the pay for the coaches. I mean, with our budget the way it is, all the money we're gonna be losing. You know, I feel that you know, if they, if they agree, if they're, they're gonna be a coach, you know, that they don't get paid until they, they coach. Especially with the money issues that we're, we're, we're facing right now with the district.
Can I chime in just one second?
Yes.
Okay, uh, in regards to paying for coaches, uh, it's, it's been historical that coaches are appointed within the last few years. We hire all our varsity, actually, we've been hiring all our coaches in July and I'm not saying we need to do that. But if you look at the new athletic policy that we just approved over the summer, there are duties and responsibilities that varsity coaches and a lot of coaches do that are throughout the season. And, uh, you know, there's an expectation that varsity coaches are involved in youth organizations and outside school and ordering and attending clinics and all those kinds of things. And they represent our school in a lot of, uh, meetings sometimes, uh, as the varsity, whatever coach. And they don't get paid for that. They never have. I think the coaches understand it comes with leading the program. And, um, I'm fairly confident that, uh, that we, it, the message would be very clear that if we don't play, you don't get paid. And I don't think they would have a problem with that. They understand that.
All right. Is there any other questions or comments or statements that, um, the Board of Education would like to make at this time?
So we're, Dan, being fully remote for the next two weeks puts us on October fifth. Our next board meeting is October thirteenth. Can we say if all goes well that we would, you know, unpause on the fifth before our next meeting? And would we have a special meeting if we needed to hire coaches before the thirteenth?
So we could, we could, you could give me the authority to appoint the coaches pending board appointment at the next meeting. We could have a special meeting. There's more than one way to do this. Um, you know, like we, we have emergency hires, all the, we, I don't, they're not emergency hires. We have hires all the time that need fill a position and then the board appoints them. Even though we needed them, we need them in immediately. Like if we have, find a French certified person and Duffy and Matt interview them and it's, it's a certified candidate who can teach French, we're gonna plug them in. We're not gonna wait for that to happen. So we can certainly, um, put them in or we could have a meeting or.
And as far as the ten practice requirement, that hasn't changed, right, Greg? As far as schools that are paused or?
The section has applied to the state organization for a waiver effective October first for a reduction of practices from ten back to six. There's no assurance that that will be granted, but the section is trying to help us out with that. We should know, I would assume it was filed today from what I understand. So it may take a few days for that action to occur. Or at least find out if it's gonna happen.
Thank you.
I would like to say one more thing, if you don't mind. Um, we keep saying October fifth and I realize that was a date that we discussed um, in our, uh, last board meeting. Um, but we're kind of in a new situation right now. So I think we need, really need to be careful that we not pick a specific date and use that as our turning point. As the way things are right now, um, kids, students will be returning back to school, um, as long as everything goes well on the fifth of October. So to, to, um, link that with a starting date of athletics might be, um, premature. And that, um, we should be very careful that we, as a Board of Education, do not tag that date as an athletic starting date. Until we know that we can function, because our, our priority is education. So we want to make sure that we can ed, educate our students before we commit to an actual athletic start date. I'm done.
How do others feel about that?
I definitely, I definitely agree with Kathy.
I definitely I definitely agree with Kathy. We should see how things are going first before we set a date on athletics.
I agree with Kathy and Pauline. This is Chris.
Thank you. There's a lot of silence out there that I I'm not sure how to interpret it. You don't want to have a conversation on the side.
Yeah, this is Crystal. Um a again, I I support um athletics and extracurricular pause right now. You know, I I agree with Kathy in the sense that you don't want to give a specific date, but at the same time, if you know, if it's October fifth and we still have four cases of covid in our county and nothing, I'm being glasses, you know, a hundred percent full here and optimist, you know, four cases in the county and zero cases in the community. You know, do we need a a week to get back the kids back into the groove before they start sports? I mean, that's something I think the educators and and the coaches can tell better than me as a parent or a board member.
I was silent because I was in the process of typing it out. Some may have seen that in the comments, but um uh this is my category that um I think having a date should be is good because it it gives us a target, but it should be clear that it's a goal and not a um anything solid. And that should be communicated over and over to coaches in the community and um and parents, and this is what we're trying to do, but I think everybody can understand at everybody's workplaces and and everybody's weddings and blah, 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 and everything they come across these days is is, you know, the the dates are are going to be um you know, it's a it might be a goal rather than a than a hard stop date. So I think we made that clear. I think it would be acceptable, but there's so much so much involved in this process that is unclear. It's nice to try to to get something um not locked in, but something um done anyway, as as far as the the coaches and the and the sports.
Thanks, Mike. So I just want to make sure that this is uh go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, this is Ed. So um I agree. I think I think the current state of the situation, you know, makes everything be up in the air. No question about it. I I do feel though that, you know, prior to this, you know, we've gone all through summer with no incidences through soccer and several sports. And I think that needs to be considered as well because, you know, with with all the all the events that were going during the summer and no cases, that's got to come into play to s to some respect uh or at least some awareness. Now, this current situation, obviously, you never know. Someone decides to travel at some point somewhere and gets affected and comes back and that's obviously a a, you know, something to be concerned about and that can happen. Uh so right now, we just don't know until we get more information. Um and maybe I think all of us here can can usually be happy to be have an emergency meeting to go over, you know, what the process of hiring people going forward is going to be uh at the next steps since we're kind of so so new into this whole thing. And it would give us a good place to have an update uh anywhere in public.
So I just for clarity, though, the game changer, there's a game changer here for sports, and that's what um Kristoff was 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 um pointing out is not just here at Beatman Town with his fourteen days. Those kids playing sports. And so if you play sports with another kid, it's not about did you have ten minutes of interaction within six feet. It's now if you played sports, you're going to get quarantined. Refs, coaches, players, that's the new that's the standard that's been implemented on in the community. So that's interesting to put in, you know, to know. The parents will have to know that going into to soccer and that could impact our education system too if um say we have um a math teacher on the sideline or some teacher on the sideline and they get quarantined and they're teaching from home and they're they have regular ed students. Like that, I just want to throw that out there. And Ed, were you saying that? What did you say at the end about the hiring?
I I I said I I I support us having an emergency meeting to go over, you know, whatever what is going to happen with hiring. Um because it'll allow us to kind of get clarification on on how the new process is unfolding and even an opportunity for us to get an update in public with what's happening right now.
So we'll put that out. Kathy can Kathy and you can work on that um if um if the board so chooses. I think Mike had a um other comment on that. Um not a problem either way. Uh we'll know a lot more tomorrow and I talked to Greg. I appreciate Greg not not getting engaged in that with me uh this afternoon. Um but we'll know more tomorrow on who our final coaching appointments are. And I'll make sure that the board's aware. I'll also promise to uh check in. Let's give it a week and see where we are with cases. Is this a blip on the screen and we're really good? Or is this an event that we really have to be concerned about? I think that's uh that'll be important too. Anything else with athletics? So I would like to go into um executive session. I don't have the agenda. I think that was the last item on the agenda. Um I would like to go into executive session to to discuss something else with the board. I don't know that it will be long. There's no action pending afterwards. Um the the reason for the meeting would be for um to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons in Article fourteen collective negotiations under Taylor law, civil service law.
Right. So uh maybe it was off that the Board of Education go into executive session executive session two. Thank you. So motion by Ed, second by
Second.
By Pauline.
So it's important for everybody to X out of this.
We're not done. Okay, um any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. No abstains, resolution passes. Now we switch.
No, excuse me, Kathy. Kathy. You you need a clerk pro temp. Kathy.
Clerk pro temp?
Yes.
I volunteer to be clerk pro temp.
Motion for Kathy.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, so we have who was the motion?
Mark.
Ed. Oh, sorry, Mark. And then Chris was the um second.
And just make sure that you X out of this meeting. You can always go back to the invite or I could resend the invite. We X out of this meeting because if not, there'll be people to be able to hear into executive session. So X out of this meeting and then we'll I'll send everybody an invite uh to another Google meeting. Okay?
But afterwards, we're returning to this. To adjourn.
That would be the standard form, yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.